Morning, everyone. I would like to call the last of this term regular county council. October fourteenth, twenty twenty five meeting to order at nine thirty. We will start with our land acknowledgement. Oh, we only have four in the room, pardon me. We don't quite have quorum. We now have quorum. So I will start again. Welcome everyone to our regular county council Tuesday, October fourteenth meeting, the last meeting of this term. I would like to call this meeting to order at nine thirty. We will start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty six and Treaty eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. And just before we move to the approval of the agenda, I just wanted to say quickly a few words. And that is to my fellow councillors, thank you for your service these past four years. We've always shared a common goal, and that was to do what each one of us felt was the best of the best for the people of Athabasca County. We can be proud of the accomplishments made and the path forged towards a stronger future. To our administration and our staff led by our C A O and department directors, your hard work does not go unnoticed. Thank you for being the backbone of this organization and helping us to move forward on so many fronts. You have been essential to everything we've accomplished, and I deeply appreciate all you do. And to our residents, thank you for your engagement, feedback, and patience. Your voices guide our work. Please keep that communication coming. It has been a privilege and an honor for me to serve as both councillor and Reeve this past term. And I'm grateful for this opportunity, and I hope to continue serving our county again. Should the residents place their trust in me for another term, there is still so much more to be done. Thank you all. Alrighty, so to the approval of the agenda, if we could start with any additions, deletions, or changes. Um, I would like to actually change one order item twelve point nine of enclosed to go before twelve point five, please. So that'll just change it those items twelve point nine to go for twelve point five. Good morning. Are there any other additions, deletions, or changes? If not, uh, we will go around the room for council to decide on the items to discuss. The items that I know of are two point one, four point one, five point one, five point two, six point one, seven point two, seven point five, eight point one A, eight point two, ten point one A, ten point one I, ten point one P as in Paul, and all closed session items twelve point one through twelve point nine. Are there any others? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as discussed? Councillor Cromwell would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as discussed. All those in favor? And I see no opposed. So that would be eight and oh. And we have a delegation at ten A M., which of course is not here at this time. So we will move to five point one of our agenda, which is on page forty one of your package. The motion on the floor to put forward for this one is to donate one thousand dollars from the grants to organizations budget to the Athabasca R C M P detachment for the Protect D N A marketing initiative. And I would like to go ahead and move that motion. Uh, I'll just put a quick comment out there. Um, I think this is a wonderful initiative that the R C M P um are very interested in in rolling out. And as I mentioned in a previous meeting, I think it is so incredibly important that anything that we can do to help uh with crime in our community uh is a is a benefit. Go ahead, please. Um, I'd like to just add to that, that I have had residents point out how much the province is downloading R C M P costs onto our overburdened taxpayers it is. And I have not had any positive response to that idea. Okay, thank you. Um, as a matter of fact, I'll just also mention, I've had several residents extremely excited about this particular initiative uh and are really looking forward to getting it off the floor. So I guess we have some competing uh opinions for sure. Anybody else? Councillor Anderson?
Just noted it, it's actually Pro Tech, like T E C H D N A.
Yes.
If anybody's trying to look it up online.
Yeah, Pro Tech is in, yeah, a spelling error there. Typele. Mm hmm. Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, please, Deputy Menz.
I think it's a great initiative, uh, talking with the R C M P, uh, especially, uh, the sergeant there. Um, it's very, it's looked upon as being a positive, positive uh project to take on. And honestly, for a thousand dollars, I think it's a huge bang for for everybody's buck there. So, but yeah, I'm looking forward to voting. And uh positive on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, then if we're, oh, please go ahead, Councillor Hall.
Um, I guess just I've missed the meeting. So what is the thousand dollars for?
It would be for them to be able, the R C, yeah, Athabasca R C M P detachment to begin the marketing initiative for the kits that are required to um give out to the residents uh to start the initiative.
Okay, and there was a request from the R C M P for this?
The R C M P have been discussing it through their uh meetings that we've had here as well uh with regards to requiring those funds. Can you clarify, was there a written request? As far as I know, no. Not that I know of. It's just been discussed in our meetings of their needs. Please go ahead, Councillor.
As I recall, when the R C M P were here making their presentation uh to council, they discussed this item as being something they thought had great potential. And they were intending to put it in their budget, but they did not, they did not get not approved. It is such a small amount of money. I like that provides fifty kits. Uh, like, I don't know why we're even sweating over it. It's, it's, it couldn't be money better spent.
Thank you, Councillor Gillock, Councillor, Councillor Tamsik.
I also agree, you know, we still have a large amount of money in our grants to organization fund that this would um really be a benefit for our residents.
Thank you, Councillor Cromwell.
Thank you. In this room, we have talked about crime prevention, crime reduction, community crime, property crime at length over four year. We give money to a variety of different organizations, a diff- a variety of different initiatives. And here's one where we can actually give money that can help Joe Farmer, Joe landowner in our county and have a little bit of protection or the ability to get back bits of property crime. I think it would be ludicrous not to move forward and actually go out and support our community with an initiative that will actually better our community.
Thank you very much. I think that everyone has had a chance to speak. All right, so the motion is, um, Reeve Holland would like to donate one thousand dollars from the Grants to Organizations budget to the Athabasca R C M P detachment for the Protect D N A marketing initiative. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor? And those opposed? That's six and three, thank you. All right, the next item up is five point two, Community Grants Program, page forty three of your package. The recommendation here uh is that council approves the Athabasca County Community Grants Program as presented and further rescinds Grants Policy sixty-two hundred, seventy-six hundred, twenty-six thirteen, seventy-six ten, seventy-six twenty-five, seventy-six fifteen, and thirty-six eighty-five. And I think I will uh ask, of course, administration if you'd like to weigh in on the uh request for decision.
Good morning, honorable members of council. Uh, as you'll see, we're seeking approval of the Athabasca County Community Grants Program as presented and that the old grant policies be rescinded.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a discussion? Go ahead, please, Councillor Cromwell.
Thank you. Just as we have many policies that have been in place for quite a while, I would just like to hope before making amendment, hope that there will be a good bit of social media blast and that all these halls will receive halls, groups, organizations, et cetera, will receive notice of any change in deadline or uh process that has been the norm for many years so that we are not getting a few people missed by a change in our plan. You can tell me that's gonna happen, I'll be happy.
Through the chair to Councillor Cromwell, we will, of course, we can reach out to the community groups and also advertise on our social media. And if there's any assistance that they need while preparing their applications, we're more than ready to help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, please, Deputy Reamens.
Just uh wondering on page fifty-three, uh, under Local Cemetery Improvement Program, uh, four point seven point three, provide a grant for thirty-five hundred over a two-year period. I know it's at three thousand and it's a thirty, we're just gonna advance it five hundred. Did we? I can't remember if we made it a different number when we were first talking about this, or?
Okay, uh, through the chair to Councillor Menz. It was agreed upon at the last meeting that we increased to thirty-five hundred, correct?
It was, it was agreed upon with thirty-five hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I seem to have a different recollection of it being discussed that we had thought that we would look at even five thousand at that meeting was, I can't remember, was there a motion that? Um, I guess my memory is failing me.
Um, uh, yes, there was a a motion that was created.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, I guess I'll put it out there, is council interested in looking at, uh, being that we have, we've seen three thousand for two years for a very long time? Um, would council, uh, is council happy with thirty-five hundred, or would they consider going four thousand or five thousand? Or go ahead, Councillor Cromwell.
Thank you very much. Um, I would like to make the amendment to change that to five thousand dollars.
Okay. Do we need to uh rescind any prior motions? I don't, was that at a committee of the whole discussion? If I'm not mistaken? Yeah, it was a committee of the whole discussion, okay. So all the amendment by Councillor Cromwell. Increase the uh local cemetery improvement. Thank you. To five thousand. All righty. Um, before we go uh to the amendment, is there any further discussion with regards to the policy? Go ahead, please, Councillor.
I'd like to speak against the, the uh increase in this. I think the county should be there to help communities with things that they can't do for themselves. And uh helping them with some seed money, I, I think has been doing a good job. It's been adequate to this point. And uh, I think it just kills initiative in the communities when we're basically throwing money around. It just, you know, uh, I think they're doing just fine the way it is, and and I think that when you start spending money in that way, uh, people back away from it and you kind of kill community spirit and and the encouragement of things that people can do for themselves. Uh, and this is something they can do for themselves with a little seed money. I think it's advantageous. Excuse me.
Thank you. Um, uh, just as a, as a comment, and I appreciate what you're saying for sure. Um, but in uh learning about um some of the things that need to happen in some of the cemetery's that are really increasing costs for groups such as um ground sonar for unmarked graves, um lifting old uh graves, uh, you know, to restore them, that kind of thing has become extremely expensive for many cemeteries to be able to try and function and try and raise that money. So um, I think it's important to to give that hand. Go, go ahead, please, Councillor Hall.
I, I wonder a little bit about the language, just making sure we're clear that what the expectation is. I think, you know, the intent is in every two-year cycle or in every two-year window, there's a maximum funding. But if that, does that mean, um, I think, I think we need to be more specific in our language. So if in twenty twenty-four, there was no request, and in twenty twenty-five, there's a request, does that mean they're not eligible in twenty-six, or that they are eligible at twenty-six but not twenty-seven? So I just, I, I, I think we could clarify that language to say that is it, like, there's a two-year block and inside of that, you're only eligible? And I I think it's important that we consider, you know, escalating costs over time. But, you know, we, council agreed on a modest increase uh at the last time we discussed this policy. And I feel like we're getting a little bit too uh ahead of ourselves by, on the amendment for two reasons. Um, one is we were at three thousand dollars every two years, and now we're moving to twenty-five hundred dollars per year. And we haven't had a request from any organization to do this. And so I worry that, um, you know, we're, we're, uh, none of the cemetery groups have asked for this, and we're again getting ahead and making decisions without information. Yeah, whether it's even even needed. So I, I, I think the policy is fine to move forward, but I feel like the amendment is too generous at this point.
Go ahead, please, Councillor Tamsik.
Um, I know some of the residents in groups that uh belong within my area and beyond that uh raising funds for the local, local improvement um grant um has been very interesting, the cost of fencing, whether, whether it be fencing replacement and whatnot. Uh, prices have gone up, and then four point seven eleven was a great opportunity to have some of those um issues come back to council.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other further discussion? Go ahead, please, Councillor Anderson.
Thank you. In trying to uh make this as user-friendly and reader-friendly as possible, I noted that under almost every program, it says each applicant must submit Schedule A, Schedule B, supporting documents, and Schedule C. Um, I'm just kind of wondering if, when that's read by members of the community, are they going to assume that they have to submit all of that at the time of application? Because I don't, I didn't see anything that stipulated only the application form and budget form need to be submitted at time of application, or even that the budget form has to be submitted at time of application. So I just think there's a little bit of clarity we could put in there to make sure that uh people are prepared with their submissions and not having to go back and forth and feel that the rules are changing.
Okay, so in this particular area, so for example, for the cemetery on page fifty-three, it says each applicant must submit Schedule A, application form, Schedule B, budget form, supporting documents, including a letter of support from the owner of the cemetery, invoices and receipts, and Schedule C, final reporting form. So that, that, does that cover what you were mentioning in this particular section, or do you want to see it in every single?
Yeah, so essentially that clause is in every section. Um, and then we have a whole another section of this grant that talks about the final reporting and what supporting documents are required. So I'm just wondering if we shouldn't remove number three and number four so that it, every applicant must submit their application form and a budget. And then further on, it talks about what the follow-up is, but just so that they aren't scrambling thinking, oh, now we have to provide supporting documentation, or we have to provide this final report that doesn't actually mean anything at the beginning of the process. Um, or that they think that they, you know, only need the application form, and then they're requesting a budget form later on. It's, I just think we could be a little bit clearer with that.
So I'm just going through each one. Um, do you have a recommendation where you would like to see the clarity in the policy? Cause I'm seeing each applicant must submit all of those items. And you just submit.
I just think that we could um provide clarity on what's required to be submitted upfront versus what's required to be submitted as follow-up after the project or after the event.
Does administration have a suggestion on where they would, where clarity would be appropriate? In the policy?
On, on application, on completion.
So good to do.
Madam Chair, we can change that to upon application and then upon completion and just break them out so they're clarified as to what's needed for each uh sequence.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. Is that, is that satisfactory? So we don't need an amendment? It would be just as discussed with regards to our motion? Great, fantastic, Councillor Hall.
In that, in that section, I guess I do wonder if that's actually two separate ideas. Um, some of the supporting documents clearly should come first, like, uh, you know, a letter of support with the, with, with the application. But invoices and receipts, um, to me, it seems like those, those can only come after you've spent the money. Um, and you may not spend the money until you know whether or not you've received the grant. So it part three, unless I'm, um, you know, interpreting the, 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 the reading wrong, but I, I wonder if, if some of that isn't putting the cart ahead of the horse as well, like, maybe that's actually two separate ideas. Invoices and receipts are, you know, with your final reporting, obviously, and but supporting documents like the letter of support should come first, cause if uh we, that may impact the decision on whether the grant is approved, if there's uh no support from the owner of the cemetery, whoever that might be. And what if they don't have that? Is that a, is that a uh, a critical uh failure in the case of the cemeteries? Because I, I think, uh, I suspect that some of the organizations that own the cemeteries may be difficult to locate or round up with some of the small, um, small faith groups that we don't really see active in the region anymore.
Is there something you want administration to add to the policy?
I just identified it.
Yeah, in what section, like, where, whereabouts? I'm hearing local improvement program, cemetery, local cemetery improvement program, but where would you like that to be inserted?
I, I think I've just said that part three, in my view, might need to be split into two separate line items because some of that has to come in advance and some of that, to me, seems more reasonable to come after the fact.
So the section number that you're referring to, I'm sorry, I can barely hear you. The fans are, are causing issues.
So at least as it relates to four point seven point six.
Okay.
Three. And in any place that that same language is repeated throughout the uh throughout the policy.
Does administration understand what the request is? Thank you. And you would like that same request for every single, um, each applicant?
Where it applies, like in, in four point nine, it's, you know, it's, it's not relevant there.
The impromptu requests you're referring to? In four point nine?
Like, four point nine point three, um, you know, doesn't, doesn't, uh, doesn't really split, uh, like, there's, there's no, that's all stuff that reasonably can come at the end of the, along with the final reporting. So it's just where, where it's relevant that some things maybe are more natural to come with the application and some are more natural to come with the final reporting.
Okay.
And um, I didn't catch that when I read it last night, so I don't have a list of every place of that.
Okay, does council agree with the uh request for administration to make those changes? Yes, 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 I'm seeing, we don't need an amendment, it's as presented. Uh, Deputy Reamens?
Just, uh, just to give my feedback, just regarding some of these changes and stuff like that. I've, I've actually, through the uh Cemetery Improvement Program, I've actually filled, filled out and, and through so that Athabasca Cemetery Pro uh Society. And I don't know if we're, might be making this too convoluted for administration to keep writing down, like, they must, you must do this, you must do that, you must do this. It's, what we're asking is just people to have communication with other people when you come in here to ask for the uh, you know, when I came in here and asked for the application and, and, and how it works and everything, I actually had a discussion. And I went back and filled it out and everything and, and that. So I don't know if we need to write down every point blank. It worked for me and, and, and it wasn't too convoluted. I don't know, it's just I think, yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to write down exactly what you need to put exactly where. That's communication between administration and the people who are actually in the, in the application itself. I had no trouble. And uh, yeah, that's, that's my point of view. And sometimes we make, sometimes you make it things too convoluted and then, and then, uh, then people get upset because, well, they didn't tell me this and they didn't tell me that, and it's like, well, I don't know, it's, to me, it's communication. Come in, uh, sir, application, administration will sit down, kind of give you the background on, on, on how it runs and, and away we go.
All right, so with the opposition, is it required to have an amendment? Voted on, Councillor Hall, a second amendment?
Uh, I'm just bringing up, uh, you know, I think the, the request is not about making it convoluted, but more, um, I mean, what I've heard from my colleague and from other, it's really just about making sure that it's clear the what and the when for people who are, who are using the program. And so, um, you know, breaking a couple of things up into an additional bullet point, I, I think these are guiding documents and they provide instructions on, on how you want the program to work. So, um, I think it just simplifies, you know, the requests are not material changes, they're just really about hitting the uh enter key on a certain line and adding a, a next line. Um, but it's, it's around adding clarity so we don't put groups in a spot where they don't quite understand what they want to do or that, you know, maybe on the admin side so that there's clarity that, um, what items are expected in advance and what are expected after the fact. Um, so there's no, no having this go off the rails in terms of the way we, we hope that it would go, but not to, not being clear in our language. So I, I, I have no comment on whether we need to vote on that or not.
Shall we take a poll? On how people feel about those changes? All right, we'll start with a poll. Councillor Cromwell? Polls, yes, yes, yes. No? I'll take yes, 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 yes. It's unanimous for the changes, thank you. Um, just for clarity purposes, on the appeal uh point, uh, four point seven point one-one, that cemetery groups wish to appeal any decision, respecting this program may do so by requesting and writing to the C A O that county council hear the appeal. Um, if there is a uh maximum amount, that appeal would um obviously not be considered, or would it be considered?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I think it's a case by case. Just, just depends on the situation.
So council could then go ahead and say we would increase it or we won't increase it. Okay, thank you. All right, is there any further discussion on this particular item? So we have an amendment on the floor by Councillor Cromwell to increase the total cemetery, local in, local cemetery improvement program maximum from thirty-five hundred to five thousand. Okay. If we're ready for the votes, nope, Councillor Gillock, would you like to comment?
Just I need to reiterate one more time. Since COVID, there's been a real marked decline in community participation. And uh, and uh, my biggest concern and what I see now is loss of our communities, loss of community spirit, loss of community participation. And I don't think just, you give somebody seed, they grow it, they reap the, the rewards. And when you start giving them the rewards without the whole process uh going into it, it's not good for community involvement, it's not good for community development.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Cromwell, and then Councillor Capitan.
Thank you, I look at it a little bit differently. You're right, volunteerism is down, community engagement is down. We have cemeteries and organizations run by. Well, let's be honest, more. Of the more mature residents of these communities, not the young people. It would be very nice and I'd always make people come to us with their hand out like a little beggar boy going daddy, please, I want you to help me. We have a chance to honor our elders, our families, with nicely maintained grounds, et cetera. Let's honor our communities, our history, and give a meaningful donation to places where our help really does make a difference. We have the ability to help improve, to make sure that they can get them maintained, to make sure. That they can get this done or that, we are not giving them a reward, we are helping them, while we just heard. That the communities are not always able to help enough to get it done. So maybe this is one where we have to go, a whole fifteen hundred dollars more could make a huge impact. For these little groups, a huge impact to that community, that sense of community, that sense of feeling and. Look at the old adage, when you look good, you feel good, when you feel good, you work good. When your cemetery looks good, your families are happy, they feel good. And you know what? I, I think that's worth a little bit more of our investment to ensure. That these places are taken care of and we are honoring that history of our community. And I will stand by that a hundred percent.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Capitaine.
Um, originally, yeah, I definitely was okay with going up with that, with the costs of. Equipment rising and fuel and all those things, but what I. Understand and, and really gave great thought to what Counselor Gerlock said is that. Seed money is what helps community groups grow and build team. As well as, we're not denying them anything, we're still offering a grant of thirty five hundred. And I'd like to also point out that council at any time has the right to change that or give a one-off. I want to say donation or, or handout of help when perhaps a greater need arises. And we'll point out to the Rochester Peaceful Pines when their shed was broken into and all their equipment stolen. Council was able to make the decision to help them outside of that policy, so I don't think we're denying anyone by keeping it at thirty five hundred. And allowing council to make, you know, discretionary changes if needed, but I still think it's a generous amount and. Um, as Counselor Hall pointed out, no one's asked for more, so I kind of think we're beating the horse here.
Okay, thank you. I think we're, go ahead, Counselor Hall.
Just following up and thinking on an expansion of some of the comments we've heard, I. I think we want to remember this adds forty two thousand dollars to our budget. And for me, the question then comes, what are we going to stop doing to fund this? You know, the, I feel like an increase is more appropriately referred to a level of service discussion, so we can talk about. How it aligns with our priorities and how it aligns with how we want to motivate the community and, and I agree, we should use resources to. Plant seeds, basically, and to motivate the community and to build community, but I think it has to be, it has to occur in that greater context of how. Of, of a bigger plan, and I, I think it's a problem that we just keep adding to budget. Without putting it in that context of, is this the most important thing? And we think it's only forty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars is a lot of money. And without seeing it in that broader perspective, I don't know where that money is coming from, but I can tell you, I'm not willing to vote for a tax increase to fund this. And, and, and right now, we don't know where this is coming from, except to increase taxes on this, and that's. We, we have to, we have to slow down how we just keep adding to budget and. And I think, again, in the context of a level of service discussion where we say, you know. One of the things will make our community great is if we have the best cemeteries in the province. Then, okay, we can, we can prioritize it, know where it is, but we haven't had that discussion yet, so this. I, I would encourage us to stop with these one-off ads to budget, because forty here and forty there adds up to a million bucks pretty quick.
Okay, thank you, we're kind of cutting into our delegation time, so if there's no further discussion, I think we'll go ahead with the vote on the amendment. Which Counselor, Counselor Cromwell put forward, does anybody need the amendment read again? No, okay, all those in favor of the amendment? Two, three, four, and those opposed, two, three, four, five, that amendment fails. The motion, does anybody want to own the motion that we was recommended? Counselor Deputy, Counselor Deputy Rehman's, we'll just keep adding, not going, that approves the Athabasca County. Community Grants Program as discussed and further rescinds grant policies sixty two hundred, seventy six hundred, twenty six thirteen, seventy six ten. Seventy six twenty five, seventy six fifteen, and thirty six eighty five. If we're ready for the vote, all those in favor? And I don't see any opposed, thank you very much, it's nine and oh, and if we might take a few minutes to, is our delegation ready? Okay, um, being that our delegation is ready to go and we've run into a little bit of their time. Um, we will go ahead, um, this is four point one of your agenda package. This is the authenticity Boyle Fish Pond, um, presentation. They're just connecting, thank you. Okay, um, so he can hear, can John, can you hear us?
You bet, I can.
Okay, thank you so very much, I believe everybody has gone through introductions the last time we spoke, if I'm not mistaken. Or do you require introductions, John?
All good, we can proceed.
I'm sorry, I can barely hear him.
Oh, sorry, we can proceed.
We can proceed, that's fantastic, apologize for running a little bit late into your time, but please go ahead.
Well, thanks, your worship members of council, uh, the last time we spoke, I introduced the feasibility study that we were conducting. On behalf of authenticity for the county. Uh, the Boyle Fish Pond feasibility study basically is to determine the fate of the fish pond and whether the county is going to pursue. Renewal of its lease when it expires in the next couple of years. Since we last met, we entered into our stakeholder engagement program. That included outreach to some stakeholders, uh, three of the highlights would include Alberta Transportation, one that we feel. Maybe in a, a great partner for maybe designating this as a, an arrest stop to take some of the pressure from maintenance. Off of the county and, and divert that to, to the province. Secondly, the Alberta Conservation Association, uh, they are a current partner, as they do stock the fish actively, but they do have other programs. Uh, and some potential, uh, you know, grant opportunities that even administration is, is considering presently. Uh, for potential funding, uh, for some improvements. Thirdly, the Village of Boyle, I did have the opportunity to meet with their council on October first to introduce the project. Uh, and we've since received a letter of endorsement from the village, just indicating they would like to continue conversations with the county, but. A fully support, uh, the Boyle Fish Pond to continue. As it relates to public engagement, we had a public open house at the Boyle Farmers Market. Uh, I met with about fifty two people, meaningful conversations with about half of them, very strong support from the public, uh, for. Of retaining the pond and something to bear in mind, uh, you know, the statistical validity of, of that is low, only because it's a very focused group. And we're talking about residents of the Boyle area, uh, we did have a public open house, or, or sorry, an online survey that was in, introduced at the open house. It was also advertised on the county website, uh, of the forty responses, uh, more than our, it was half of the respondents. Were actually outside of fifteen kilometers of Boyle, so, uh, better representative, representation on the written survey, but again. A very consistent pattern of people who approve or are highly in support of the pond to be, uh, to continue on. The report includes some recommendations, the recommendation is that the county in some means, uh, does pursue renewal of this lease. But does further conversations with, uh, stakeholders to see what partnerships may lie, we do have a couple of years to do that, but time is of the essence. Uh, there are some things you'd like to do upfront before, uh, things are officially signed. Uh, because the commitment actually has to be committed to in twenty twenty six, even though it expires in twenty twenty seven. Uh, for the most part, I, I believe the report's fairly self-explanatory with the recommendations, uh, something that we are also recommending is that. The administration considers some minor improvements, I will say, the public sentiment, they're not looking for. Uh, anything substantive, we want to retain the natural passive character of the fish pond, uh, and that came through. Discussions with residents, with stakeholders, uh, and we really feel that some of the recommendations are. Uh, you know, they're very subtle and some of the improvements may be things like, uh, improved access to the water's edge. Maybe some small docks that people could use for fishing, uh, and, and potentially some upgrades to the day use areas. Uh, there were some discussions outside of the scope of this, uh, a walking trail that linked Boyle Fish Pond to the Village of Boyle is something that came up. But again, outside of the scope and the confines of our study, uh, but that was identified through the engagement process, uh, be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, council, any questions for John today? It sounds like, oh, go ahead, please, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Through the chair to the center, uh, this has been identified as a feasibility study, was there any analysis done on? The feasibility of maintaining the fish pond? Or what partnerships may be the best to look at from that standpoint?
Yeah, through the chair to you, Counselor Anderson, the recommendation was. To partners with. With, to use Alberta Transportation, uh, the scope was outside of, negotiating was outside of our scope. And that's, it would be for administration to move forward with the next steps, but the first would be to reach to Alberta Transportation. Again, to identify this potentially as a vehicle, uh, as a pull-off. Uh, similar to others that you see on highways that have typically a washroom and some, uh, uh, waste receptacles and, and whatnot. That, that seems to be the sticking point, one of the more challenging things, uh, for county administration to oversee is the cleaning of the garbage and, and keeping up with the. Uh, with the washroom, so to take that pressure off the county would be a positive. The other thing to, to mention on that front, uh, if you recall, we discussed the lease area not covering the entire parcel that's actively being used. If we were to leave the lease area the same, uh, and negotiate with Alberta Transportation, that portion of it could stay within provincial hands, because that is. Uh, the parking lot, the washrooms, the waste receptacles are outside of the current lease boundaries, and then the county could just stick with the recreation lease. Providing that as a service, uh, secondly, the other identified, uh, group was the Alberta Conservation Association. They work with, with dozens of municipalities across the province on ponds very similar to this, uh, they do. Provide things outside of just stocking fish, uh, like funding, like aeration, uh, providing technical knowledge. Uh, so there are some opportunities to, to reach out to them as well.
Thank you very much, uh, does that answer all your questions? Yeah, you're good. Does anybody else have anything go with that, Counselor Hall?
Thank you for this, um, would your recommendation change if Alberta Transportation is unwilling to partner?
Uh, through the chair, no, not necessarily, uh, I would just say that the, uh, when it came to the daily maintenance, there might be another avenue taken. For example, a partnership with the Village of Boyle, that could be pursued, and this is nothing that we've, uh, committed to or that the village is committed to. But potentially because they have staff much closer, uh, maybe they deal with day-to-day operations of waste removal and, and cleaning the. The washroom and there, maybe there's a financial contribution from the county, that's just an example, again, this is nothing that's been discussed. Uh, but if A T is unwilling, uh, I would say, uh, no, I would continue on with the, the current recommendations.
Okay, thank you, is that satisfactory for you, that's what you needed to know, okay, is there any further discussion? Well, I would like to thank you so much for being here this morning, John, and for your presentation and the work that has gone into this particular feasibility study. Uh, just so you are aware, um, through the consent agenda, the motion has already passed to receive your report as information. And to refer to the next strategic planning session. So again, I thank you so much for being here with us today and, and for what you have, uh, brought forward to us for consideration, thank you, and the future council for consideration. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
All right, take care, thank you. Um, I think if we might take just a five-minute recess or seven-minute recess. We'll do seven, we're going ten now, we're going ten, we have ten on the floor, we'll take a ten-minute recess, please, and we can all return at. Ten thirty, ten twenty-four. Thank you, everyone. We convene our meeting. We are at item 6.1 of your agenda package on page 100. And this is bylaw 029, 2025 Plan of Subdivision Cancellation Bylaw. Um, I see that there is first, second, and third reading requests, but I'll turn this over to administration for any, uh, conversation explanation you'd like to tell us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. Uh, the request before you is uh, sort of following up with a development application that administration has. It's a condition of subdivision that the two lots be consolidated. Uh, administration supports the request and since no public hearing is required, we are asking that council consider giving all three readings today. So we can, uh, forward the information onto the land titles office to process.
Thank you very much. Go ahead. Go ahead, please. As recommended from Counselor Chamsik, we'd like to go forward with the recommendations of the first, second, third reading. Oh, that was it. All right. If there's, is there any further discussion on this item? All right, we will go to, uh, Counselor Chamsik would like to give first reading of bylaw 029, 2025. All those in favor? And I see no opposed. We'll move to Counselor Chamsik would like to give second reading of bylaw 029, 2025. If there's no discussion, all those in favor? And I see no opposed. Counselor Chamsik would like to give bylaw 029, 2025 for third and final reading with the unanimous consent of all those present. We're ready for that. All those in favor? I see no oppose. That's unanimous. And Counselor Chamsik would like to give third and final reading of bylaw 029, 2025. No further discussion. All those in favor? And I see no oppose. Thank you. Nine and zero. Awesome. Thank you. We are moving into 7.2 Draft Policy 2915 Financial Reserves, page 108 of your package. I think everybody, uh, saw on their desk, there was a little additional item that we were given for this particular, um, item as well, the current, uh, December 31st, 2025 total reserves. And I believe there was an email that was also sent out to everyone. Did you had everyone get a chance to have a look at that? Call that up. So what we've got here is, um, the draft policy 2915 regarding financial reserves. Um, does, is there a recommended motion? Somebody want to do the motion as recommended or we're going to have discussion first? I guess we're going to have discussion first. If administration would like to go ahead, please, and thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. Yes, we purposely put as discussed, uh, because we we expect council will give us some feedback. This is your very first reserves policy and, uh, I just want to give you some background. Uh, we've been working on this policy for several months, uh, researching what other municipalities have and took some of the best practices that we felt would be kind of a made in Athabasca reserves policy. So before you is a policy and a schedule. Now, I just want to point out in the RFD, I hadn't updated the values. So the values of the current, um, reserves are are in the the handout that you got, uh, 21,469,980 and 65 cents is actually your current. And, uh, we have since revised, um, uh, the the recommended optimal, uh, values, which are in the worksheet that I, that's just for your reference. That's just so we can track, uh, the numbers. So the actual, um, optimal balance, uh, ideally would be 54,235,377 and 4 cents. Uh, so those are those new values. Uh, so before you is, um, the schedule. Um, we kind of took the values that are in the current reserves and we kind of divvied them up where we felt, uh, would be, uh, would make more sense. Of course, that's the discretion of council. And we also estimated, uh, what we felt would be the optimal level. And again, that's up to the discretion of council.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Um, just before we, uh, turn it over to council, just a quick note on page 111 of the policy. We have two 4.6s, um, just as probably a typo there, just so you're aware of it. Thank you. All right. Who would like to begin on the conversation here for our brand new reserve policy on the floor? Hey, well, go ahead, please, Counselor Anders.
Thank you. Uh, the community services line, one, I don't remember which page it was. Uh, says that the starting balance is 345,057 and 4 cents, which also happens to be the optimal balance. Wondering what that line is for and where such a very specific number came from? Like what what has contributed to such a specific number?
Uh, Madam Chair, members of council, if you take a look at the current reserves, the the printout, uh, with the blue heading, uh, under FCSS operating, that value is there. So that was money that was through the years to sur- through surplus, uh, was placed into FCSS operating. Um, so we felt that this would be the the best fit for it. So we just left the value as is.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Under administrative equipment, which I believe is mainly for IT, computers, uh, furniture, that kind of stuff. Says that our optimal is $3 million and we already have 404,000 in there. I'm just wondering how administration came to the $3 million. Being that fleet and equipment is has its own line and facilities and buildings has its own line, kind of. What do we have that would be so expensive to replace under that line item?
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of council, we're just putting some money inside aside in case there are any, uh, server upgrades, uh, or replacements. Um, just, just being careful, also taking a look what other municipalities are doing and the values that they're placing in there. Just want to be consistent.
So a server upgrade would cost us that many millions? That's alarming.
Very alarming. Thank you. Um, facilities and buildings, we have a $5 million target. But I believe our draft budget said that our shop would be 15 million. So I'm kind of wondering why that's not the $15 million target.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'll try to address that. This is specific to reserve, um, and the draft budget includes the item for a public workshop. That's a specific capital project to begin in 2026. So this is a separate item. What do we need to keep in reserve for all the other facilities that we have, including this building and all the buildings that we own?
Thank you. Is there anything further, Counselor Anderson, or you're okay for now? Okay. Um, I have a question with regards to the appeal contingency going from, uh, the starting balance of 3 million going to 6 million. Um, is that also consistent with other municipalities?
Well, Madam Chair, um, probably not. This is unique to the one large appeal that we have and, um, some other places may not have a specific reserve set aside for that appeal.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Hall.
Um, so the Schedule A is, uh, what we'll come to in just a moment. When I was reading the the policy itself, uh, under part six, I, 6.3, I think, uh, we're missing a line that's very similar to 5.2B that is direct budget contributions. Um, I think capital reserves are something we should plan for and we should be saying we need to make direct contributions out of our budget into those. It's not, reserve planning should not be an accident of defining up whatever we couldn't manage to spend in the year. On the Schedule A, I appreciate the work, uh, that's been done and I know, you know, reading the policy, there's room to keep refining and modifying. So I, I don't I know we have to start somewhere and I, I, um, you know, don't like just pegging numbers in, but I I understand why that that would occur. So I hope as time goes on, we do more documented, uh, reserve planning on our buildings and and projections there so that we can can get that, um, or to better numbers. Um, on things like the the optimal balance, I I I actually think it's silly to use, like if we can't round things in a, on our scale to the nearest thousand dollars, um, we shouldn't, you know, maybe be here. So on the the FCSS one or the community services, let's pick the nearest thousand and round that. And if we're over in there, we're over, but don't. It looks ridiculous to have 57 dollars and 4 cents. Um, the reclamation reserve at the top, I know, you know, over time, we've had changes, uh, where we had a landfill we may, you know, we might have needed to do something with, and then we didn't because we came up with a better plan or the admin came up with a better plan. I feel like last year when we were talking about, um, the budget, there was a a $7 million, give or take post closure, uh, reclamation. Liability on our financial statements. And so this is on the very top of page 115. And, uh, so we've, we've got that, uh, optimal balance at 500,000, but, um, I feel like when we had the discussion with the the auditor, there was that post closure liability of $7 million, counsel. And my memory agreed to cede that. And then then we calculated a 15 year amortization to fully fund that. And, um, so while I was reading this, it reminded me that I hadn't seen that payment in the 2026 draft budget. But that was subject to being changed in the future, but that was the direction of council. We would actually on an annual basis, budget that out. But so I I might be wrong and it wasn't 7 million, but because it was Thanksgiving weekend, I didn't spend a lot of time digging.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, Counselor, uh, I know in the 2024 financials, when I spoke to the auditor, uh, she said there was, um, actually liability that was written down, which added to our surplus at the end of the year. I think she said roughly $2 million. So our liability, not sure which one she mentioned, I don't have my notes.
Not related to a line Philadelphus.
Uh, yeah, yeah. So there was a written down. Now, we do have three more that we're going to be working on, three more, uh, separate, uh, areas that she said we need to work on and look at the liabilities. But, uh, I know last year there was a there was a $2 million that got written down. So it added to our surplus.
I think the gravel one was still in the seven range, but I don't, uh, so I I just think that that needs maybe a a bit more digging. And that's, uh, that's the extent of my notes.
Thank you. Is there anyone further who, anyone else?
Sorry.
Okay, please go ahead.
The the other comment that I had that I wanted to make was I, so as much as this is great here, the next step is actually, um, having a a plan to get there. So in each one of these categories, we should be not, you know, at some point engaging in discussion on how quickly do we want to fill each of these buckets up? And obviously some of them, um, you know, fire services. Well, that's, we're going to be filling out and emptying that back and forth, uh, continuously. But I I think, um, a recommended annual contribution needs to be, uh, needs to be added. Uh, because some of them we may just choose unallocated surplus as the as the option to to fill them there. Um, but some of them, I think we have to be really deliberate about about funding, like the post closure one in the gravel pits and, um, you know, water and sewer bridges, all some of those, I think we want to be really specific about how we're going to fund those.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to add to the conversation? Well, I for one am really pleased to see, um,
Well, I for one am really pleased to see that we have a reserves policy coming forward. And that the work that has gone into it has been huge. The optimal balance scares me to death, but it it is what it is. And I like the fact. With regards to this policy in in section seven, that this policy will be reviewed by council at least once per term. Which I think is extremely important and it gives you that time to evaluate and see where you are and if any of these amounts need to be adjusted. So I really appreciate the work that's gone into us. And thank you very much. The recommendation from administration is that council directs admin to amend the draft policy twenty nine fifteen financial reserves as discussed. And further, and that would be Councilor Hall would like to give that motion. Okay, perfect. We'll just put that right on the floor. Council Hall would like to direct administration to amend draft policy twenty nine fifteen financial reserves as discussed. And further directs administration to bring the policy to a future council meeting for adoption. If there is no further discussion, all those in favor. And opposed, one, eight and one. Thank you.
We are moving into page one twenty eight of your agenda package, which is the strategic planning and corporate priorities. Again, this is a recommendation from admin to receive the presentation for information and provide feedback. So I will. Turn this over to administration for presentation for the presentation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The purpose is just to highlight to council. And the next council, some of the, all the initiatives that. The departments are working on, each business unit is working on, and some of the things that. Administration, those business units would say are needed in the next four year term for the next council to consider. And so. After Christmas in January, February, we hope there's a really good strategic planning session with council. And some of these corporate planning initiatives should be discussed by council. This does not include anything suggested by council at this time. This is only administration snapshot of things that we've noticed, we really need to take to the next level. And council absolutely has to weigh in and add their thoughts too. And we just presented for information today, Madam Chair.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate the work that's gone into this. This is really good information for us to have and to see what's going on with the administration. And if I'm not mistaken, the strategic plan would be the area for council to bring forward what they hope to see, or would you like to have some of that information now?
Today, not really. I think that'd be a an initiative of the next council to review. The strat plan, does it need to be updated? And then the corporate, the corporate initiatives are really what feeds into. The strat plan to move the initiatives forward that you see. They're just, they're the to do list. So we are trying to secure someone to help us with strat planning in the. Early new year and then that'll be the first step to sit down with next council and see. Is the previous, the adopted strat plan, is it still current or do they want to see changes? And then how do the initiatives feed into that? And help you achieve what you want to achieve over a four year period.
That's awesome. Thank you very much. So would council like to weigh in on the presentation, on the items that they see? Well, I'll just, oh, go ahead, Deputy Reeve Minz.
Just to to bring it up, no one's noticed, under road, under road construction, there's nothing. Absolutely nothing. And that is one thing that we really need to look at. I know it's it's great to pave roads. And and do all this fine stuff. Building bridges and all this stuff, but we can't turn our back on our roads. Our roads are a huge part of Athabasca County. Because everybody uses them. And when we're not rebuilding roads. Things will fall apart, so. And shoulder pulls are great. Love to see shoulder pulls. It's not road construction. It's road maintenance as far as I care. That's my point of view, so. That's where my initial push is going to be in January, February, is road construction.
Thank you for reminding us. You have been acclaimed. Thank you, Councilor Wallack.
I'd like to make the recommended motion, please.
Recommended motion, for sure. And again, thank you so very much for bringing this forward. It is a great start and really sets up the new council well to have their strategic planning discussion. So I appreciate. Looking forward to that success coming. Councilor Wallack would like to receive the presentation of for information as discussed. Yes, okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor. Okay, and I see no opposed. Thank you. Alrighty, we are moving to eight point one A. Which is our community event calendars on page one forty six of your package. I'll start. I had one item to add on the twenty fifth of October. Along with the harvest dinner and fundraiser for the Athabasca Agriplex. And the recreation of the Johnny Cash TV show, their Amber Valley is hosting their chicken supper at five, between five and seven. There is also takeout available, so like to eat twice. Go ahead, please, Councilor Chams.
The soup for seniors lunch will be on October twenty fourth and November twenty eighth at the Grassland Hall for Grassland.
And that was November twenty fourth as well? Twenty eight, thank you, Fridays. Great. Is there anyone else who would like to make any additions to the event calendar? Alright, I guess we are, would you like to receive these as discussed to? My goodness, I'm losing it. To receive the event calendars as discussed. All those in favor? And no pose. Ready, it's eight and O. Thank you. We are moving to the meeting calendars, page one seventy six. Of your package, get there, here we go. Is there any discussion on? The meeting calendars? Go ahead, please, Councilor Chams.
November twelfth, Athabasca County Rural Women's Conference. And then November twenty eighth is an online Northern Lights meeting.
Is there any further? Discussion regarding the meeting calendars? Councilor Chams, would you like to receive the meeting calendars as presented? All those in favor? And I see no pose, it's nine and O, thank you. And if we can move now to our reports. I believe, Councilor Chams, you would like to discuss ten point one A Agriculture Service Board?
Yes, please. We've had five applicants for the agricultural bursary and we will be adding a second at next cycle. Congratulations to Leah Kufa for leading her into the large animal veterinary.
Awesome. Thank you.
I also just wanted to give a quick update on ten point one I, and that is with regards to the Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee. We did have a meeting on the tenth, just this last Friday. And it is just basically to give the new council a heads up that what's coming. The Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee heard from the consultant Jason Pfeifer. With regards to the design, planning and design for the active transportation grant that is. Between Manook and Perry Vale. It was a schematic design presentation that was given. With a couple of options for the steering committee to consider. The steering committee really felt comfortable with option one, with the least amount of development and honor. The landowners. Feedback, requests and concerns, so minimal. Minimal development along that particular trail with only two small boardwalks. To be built over the two water crossings that are there. The one thing that was excellent that we heard from was a survey was completed on the nineteen oh nine T road plan. Which is the original Athabasca Landing Trail Steering, Landing Trail itself. The concern was it might have been that the existing trail might be a little bit off of that particular road plan. The majority of the trail is within the road plan, which is fantastic. There is very, just a little bump. That's outside of it, but the landowner is quite happy, from my understanding, to leave it as is and not. Require any further development there, so a small agreement may be required. But all of that information will be coming, including the presentation. Coming from the Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee will be coming to a future council. There was, of course, a bit of opposition with regards to the transportation plan, which would have, which would. I guess, as presented, create turnaround and some parking areas within the county road allowances. So again, that was something that was discussed heavily as as concerns. But regards to that, just wanted to provide that update that the wrap up of the scope will be by December. And then a detailed design will be provided to county county council early next year.
And I believe ten point one P is in Paul. Councilor Chams would like to discuss celebrating Rural Women Conference.
We received received another SCOP grant that will definitely help with the rebranding to the Athabasca County Rural Women's Conference. We felt it was more of an encompassing name, and if administration can please name, change the updated calendars. For next meeting, please. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, does anybody else have any further discussion with regards to reports? Do we need a motion with regards to the name change? Sorry. Oh, yeah, I guess it would be a recommendation. Oh, okay. Very good. So we don't need a motion. There's no action to take, so we will just accept the reports. As discussed and just make it clean. Councilor Chams, would you like to accept the reports as discussed? Thank you very much. All those in favor? All right, no oppose. So we have come to the point of entering into closed session, I believe. We just had a break, so got Councilor Cromwell would like to make a motion that we go into closed. All those in favor? And I see no opposed, so we are officially in close. All right, we have just come out of closed and we have a few motions to go through, so bear with me. I'll do my best here. Item twelve point one. Councilor Wallack would like to move that county council direct administration to refer to option A. To uphold tax penalties as discussed for tax rule four two five one eight three zero two six. And I'll take it to the question. All those in favor? And opposed, so that's seven and one.
Six and two.
Oh, I'm sorry, who did I miss? Oh, I pardon me, six and two. I thought I saw a hand up. Pardon me, thank you. All right, twelve point two. Councilor Anderson would like to move that the county, that county council directs administr, oh, pardon me, we had an amendment on this first, pardon me. Council, sorry. Aren't we, we have to deal with the amendment before the main motion?
You 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 have to amend the main motion, so you have to put the main motion on.
Thank you. All right. The main motion is Councilor Anderson would like to direct that county council. That county council directs administration to enter into a ten year lease term for the west half of Northwest four sixty five nineteen, west of the fourth. Plus or minus eighty seven acres at a rate of sixty five dollars per acre annually. And the amendment from Councilor Hall was like to include. A rate review at the five year period of the ten year lease. Is that accurate? All right, so we will vote on the amendment first. And that amendment, again, Councilor Hall would like to include a rate review at the five year period of the ten year lease. All those in favor? And opposed, one opposed, so seven and one, that amendment passes. So the motion, main motion is Councilor Anderson. That county council directs administration to enter in a ten year lease term for the west half of Northwest four sixty five nineteen, west of the fourth. Plus or minus eighty seven acres at a rate of sixty five dollars per annual, per annual. Would to include a rate review at the five year period of the ten year lease. All those in favor? And I see no oppose, so that will be eight and O. Twelve point three. This is a long one, folks. Deputy Reeve Minz would like to move the motion that council approve. The draft utility right of way agreement reviewed in closed session on October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. That the landowner compensation rates of four thousand dollars per acre for lands taken under right of way. Two thousand dollars per acre for temporary workspace areas and seventy five hundred dollars per acre for booster station and truck fill stations. And that a service vault will be provided to all affected landowners within the right of way at the property line at no charge to the landowner. Affected by the water line installation, that is granting a right of way for water line installation. And that no application or connection fees will be charged to the effective landowners within the right of way. And that any costs beyond the right of way for water line, that is from right of way to landowner's water system location. Are the responsibility of the landowner. And the preliminary cost to the town is three hundred eighty nine thousand dollars for upsizing of the water line from the water treatment plant. To Fifty Third Avenue from two hundred fifty millimeters to three hundred millimeters. And that the twenty twenty five budget line for the design amount be increased from eight hundred nineteen thousand to two hundred and nineteen, two hundred, pardon me. Nine hundred and ten thousand. And that administration completes a rate review to determine the rate. To determine the water rate per cube for service from the water line. Everybody get that? Yeah. All right. All those in favor? Thank you. I see no oppose, so that's eight and O. Twelve point four, Deputy Reeve Minz would like to move that council direct administration to offer the mount. As discussed in closed session for the property on the east portion of Southeast ten sixty three twenty three, west of four. All those in favor? And I see no oppose, thank you. We did a switch in the agenda, so twelve point nine, this is a motion by Councilor Hall to direct administration. To advance the CAO salary to step seven effective January one, twenty twenty six. All those in favor? You're not in favor. And opposed. One, two, three, so that we have five and five and three. Correct? And then we jump down to twelve point five, or jump back to twelve point five, account that Councilor Hall would like council. To support the concept of vertical farming and would like to extend, oh, pardon me. Councilor Hall would like to move that council supports the concept of vertical farming and would like to extend a non binding letter of support to the potential developer. In the region. Okay, all those in favor? I don't see any opposed. That's nine or eight and O. That was twelve point five, twelve point six, no motion, no motion, so twelve point eight. I believe this is our last item. The Reeve would like to move that Athabasca County Council direct administration to take action effective immediately to uphold the sixty day condition. In the elected officials remuneration and expenses policy two thousand nine, responsibility section five point one E regarding the timesheet item discussed enclosed. And it would like a recorded vote. Hang on here, recorded vote, all right. All those in favor? Council Chamsik, Council Reeve Holland, Deputy Reeve Minz, Council Gerlock, Council Cromwell, and those opposed. Council Wallack, Council Hall, Council Anderson, and this meeting is adjourned.